He's gonna be a few minutes late. Thank you, Carol. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, everyone, for joining. I'm trying to see who's new from last time. Thank you for joining. We're continuing our 2020-21 Proposed Superintendent's Operating Budget Review this evening. Before I turn the meeting over to Adam, who's the Chair of the Finance Committee, I think we added on a couple items tonight and pushed a couple items into Thursday night because there's so much detail covered, we didn't want to keep you guys here until midnight, as fun as that might be for Vincent. So I think we're gonna go over the remainder of the budget, as well as some fee discussion, presentation around facilities and sports programs. So they'll take a good chunk of this evening. That being said, welcome, Mr. Chair, Mr. Finance Chairman. I hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe Mr. Masiana has a presentation, if you'd like.
It worked. Good evening. Welcome back, everyone, and welcome to everyone who's new tonight. So I would say I'm gonna be briefed this evening, but I know that's just wasting time because nobody's gonna believe me anymore. We do have, you know, several different presentations that we are going to walk through this evening, and I'm gonna just jump right in. So this is our second workshop session. The items that are covered under this budget review are instructional expense, which includes special education services, support services, maintenance, and operations. So within the context of tonight's presentations, we'll be touching on all of those topics. But we will be covering athletics and athletic fees specifically, as well as building use in the early part of tonight's discussion. So I just wanted to let everyone know that. Nothing has changed. The budget request, as we presented last week and as Superintendent presented, the budget request for 2021 is $76,330.52. That's an increase of 4.05%, or $2,973,541. As far as the assumptions that we used to build this budget, there is no changing in staffing based on enrollment. Our enrollment is going down by about 47 students next year. However, special education enrollment, that is increasing and the needs are increasing. So there's a request that's within the budget of two special ed teachers, part-time, one for Darcy Kindergarten and one for the Quinnipiac University and Transition Program. A halftime board-certified behavioral analysis. As well as on the non-certified staffing side, we're looking to add a .8 math interventionist for Dodd, as well as hall monitors at Norton and Chapman. Again, this was presented. I'm just doing a quick overview. Medical benefits is a big portion of this year's budget request so that we have contributions that are in line with our expected claims for next year. And we have also a modest increase requested in operations and maintenance. Everything that we do within our budget is grounded within the goals that we have for the school system. And I know everyone has seen this before, but complex thinking and social, emotional learning are really the key goals that we have in our district, and we've had for several years, and continue to fulfill on those goals. So the first, I'll call it, sub-presentation tonight is on Cheshire Public School Athletics. And I'm gonna start with just a, an overview of what's built within our operating budget as it relates to extracurriculars. So this is not just sports. This would be sports, robotics, music. And this comes from several different accounts. So I just wanted, for the Board's reference, that left-hand column that says account. If you wanna look and see where stipends or where music instructor expenses are budgeted in the back of the budget book, you would look in those two sections. And we total this up for 2018-19, which is the last full year, which is one of the columns in your budget book. So those expenses were $619,982. If we then look at the bus transportation related to extracurricular, that's $237,680. And you could see that the costs are in descending order from highest to lowest. Facility fees that we pay for rental of the town pool, hockey, ski, and golf, total $68,143. And you could see that it's $33,000 for the pool, $27,411 for hockey, and so on with ski and golf. Account 611, that supports the purchases that are made. And in this case, sports, robotics, and music, total $56,919. And that's just the high school. Dodd is a little bit below where it says Dodd Purchases for Sports, $39.29. We do have an athletic trainer and supplies, about $41,800. Student accident insurance, we, as a school district, purchase student accident insurance for our intramural and our competitive sports. So that would protect not only the students, but it would protect the school district in the event of student injuries that occurred during the extracurricular activities. Whenever we have games of certain size, we do pay for ambulance and police coverage. That's the $15,506. And then the last item, Cheshire High School's sports physicals. We were paying a doctor to come in and do those sports physicals, but we no longer do that as of this year, you know, just to provide overall better coverage for those students. Those students have to get their own physicals if they're participating in Cheshire High School sports. So if you total that up, $1,072,000 is what we spent in 1819, out of our budget, related to extracurricular activities. There's, what I'm not showing here is any offsets from participation fees and other things that will come as we go through the rest of this presentation. But I just wanted to give the Board a sense for what it was in 1819. The budget for this year and the proposed budget for next year is in that same range. It's not a dramatic difference in any one of those categories. So I'm providing this as a backdrop. And now we're gonna move into Title IX. As the Board knows, we recently had a Title IX complaint or a claim that we might have been in violation of Title IX as it relates to Cheshire, Cheshire High School's girls' hockey. And I'm gonna need some assistance from Tracy Nolan-Hussy, who not only is our Director of Pupil Personnel here in Cheshire, but she's also our Title IX Coordinator. I'll be on the sideline.
Okay. All right, good evening. I'm gonna try to provide you with an overview, a little summary, of what we've done and what our findings are as a result of the investigation that we've conducted and presented to the Superintendent for his review, as well as bringing it to you, the Board. So a little bit of background about Title IX. It is overseen by OCR, and that's the Office of Civil Rights. And basically, it, it's a guidance point to accessibility and equality. Basically, athletics comes into play under Title IX with OCR, and they provide guidance as far as what you need to consider in order to determine something as a sport. And some of those considerations, you know, are structure, scheduling, competitions. You know, they look at the idea that, you know, there has to be, you know, certified coaching. There has to be access to those services and the athletic training support. There's a lot of different considerations. So districts use that as guidance to determine if the sports or clubs that they're offering fit the criteria that Title IX would fall under through the guidance of OCR. Now, sports, it doesn't mean, there's several things that they look at. So when we talk about Title IX complacency with athletics, there's three factors that they kind of look at. One being equality by percentage. So when you're looking at your participation rate, you would wanna look at your male and female participation rate. But that doesn't mean that it needs to be an equal number of male to female athletes. It means that it has to be an equal participation by your current enrollment of male and female. So it's a formula. So OCR does sometimes allow and guide districts to consider that there might be a natural fluctuation with that percentage rate. You know, we were able, over a five-year trend that Mr. Trefon presented to us about participation rate, we were able to see that fluctuation with several years being female athletes participating at a higher percentage. But the participation is defined not by individual athletes, but that whole roster. So one of the things that you have to take into consideration is we have a lot of students who are on more than one sport. So each sport that we're on counts towards that total number, okay? When these types of claims come in, you know, the district does have a Title IX Coordinator. That's my role. But then also, we have Title IX coordinators in our buildings, which they're typically the building administrator, and they may help in the investigative process, okay? So Mr. Trefon put together the current sports by season so that that's there for your review. We were able to take a look at the definition of cheerleading. That came into question at the Board of Ed meeting. And, you know, when we started to unfold and dive into that a bit, we looked at the criteria with fall being something that really doesn't fit that criteria, but spring and winter being competitive cheer season fitting that criteria. So that was a factor that we did find. So this slide takes a look at that five-year trend that I was referring to. So you'll see the enrollment rate by males and females, and then the participation rate by males and females so that you can see what those trends look like over the past five years. In 1819, there was a dip, okay, where we had more males participating than females. And that's something that certainly we would wanna keep an eye on and see if that trend is continuing. And if it is, then we need to really kind of consider, through OCR complacency, what we can do to reverse that trend and try to even that proportionate rate. So what we learned is that we didn't violate Title IX due to the percentage rate with that natural fluctuation. In the, in the past, as I said, the past five years, we've had years where our females exceeded our male participation. I think it's gonna be important to take a look, as I just said, about that fluctuation trend. If it is something that we see and it continues to be looking like, you know, there's more of a range of male to female, then we would want to take a look at how we would increase the participation rate of the non-represented group, whether that be male or female. I mean, this goes for, for both parties. We are going to do that if we need to. There are no other sports in waiting that are in question. We do want to, we were, we were very careful to really listen to the students that spoke the other night at the Board of Ed when we interviewed them and to really listen to their concerns. So we do want to try to do more to address their concerns through, you know, more inclusion for the Blades as a recognized team. And what that could look like is assuring that they're in the yearbook, assuring that their events are publicized, that their scores are reported, that they can participate in captains' meetings and the other things that our sports teams do have access to. We're also going to make the recommendation that the Board approve for the, you know, next year's budget funding that can be applied to help them participate and level that participation rate that they talked about when they were here on the ninth presenting to you. Questions?
Just to clarify, Title IX only relates to sports that are, no. So if there are other extracurricular clubs, they could technically, well, no. Yes, that's, they would, they would also be able to sort of come forward and say, it doesn't have to just be sports teams that would necessarily...
Well, correct. It certainly applies to athletics. We hear about it a lot in the news through intercollegiate. You know, it's something that's a little bit more pronounced and defined at the college level. But OCR stands on a platform of equal accessibility for everything and taking everything, taking that into consideration. So they look at discrimination based on a number of things. It could be, you know, gender. It could be race. It could be sexual orientation. So very often, when somebody has a claim of discrimination, as a Title IX, a Title IX investigation would look at those types of factors, too. And once in a while, we do, we do have those investigations. And outcomes usually yield plans that can try to accommodate and support people that feel violated, but also, you know, trying to make sure that concerns are addressed and shared appropriately and people are informed. So, you know, it does, it does, you know, yield some work over the course of the year in, in that investigative process.
So I'm looking at the, firstly, thank you to you and to Mr. Trefon for putting together this great presentation. So I'm looking at the participation relative to enrollment chart, where you said that three of the five years, we are not in violation. And I'm only seeing, if I'm reading correctly, I'm only seeing one year where I, if I were just looking at it as, you know, totally, you know, uneducated on the subject, where I would think that there was one year, 1617, where the percentage of females is over 50%. So is there a plus minus that you're allowed to compensate for when you're looking at the numbers, or how do you consider that?
Well, I don't think that it's an exact formula. They try to look at 50/50, but they, at least the law as it's written talks about this natural fluctuation, but doesn't, at least from what I've researched, define a clear percentage. So I think the guidance that you receive from the Office of Civil Rights is there, that there can be a trend, or excuse me, a year where you may see a fluctuation. But if you're looking at that over a three, four, or five-year period, that there's other steps that the district would have to do to try to level that playing field. So they would want to, you know, think about how they can evaluate their current offerings and expand. They would want to think about how they can accommodate to allow more accessibility. So we are dedicated to taking a look at the end of this year, 1920 numbers, to see if they reflect the same pattern as 1819. And if they do, then that's something that we do need to plan for accordingly.
Okay, so then, so if I'm understanding what you're saying, so then from 1415 through 1617, the trend is up. It's trending upward, so then that's good. But now that we're sort of, looks like trending, well, downwards, then that, then we're, we're, could be in a position where we may need to take action.
Correct. And, and, and as I said, you know, we had a few years where we had more female participation. Same for male. If we see a trend that's, you know, looking disproportionate for our male population, we would wanna do that same process, okay?
And then finally, when your recommendation for the, for the Blades, was that to make them a team or to recommend additional funding to help them continue to be a more func, I guess, not functional, it's not the right word. No, to allow their participation to be more active as a co-op?
Yes. So currently, CIAC does not consider girls' ice hockey as a sport because there's not enough common interest across the state. So many districts do co-op for their girls' ice hockey teams. And it's not the Blades' request to separate from the co-op. They want to remain with the co-op. And we, we just don't have a level of interest to sustain a team ourselves. So they would like to continue, but we would like to try to level that, that for them financially so that it is less of a burden. And then, as I said, the other factors were the inequalities that they see about how they're looked at as far as their level of athletic participation in the school building. And those were all things, Dr. Gad and Mr. Trefon, you know, they, they were looking at this prior to that claim being made. They had made the request that this be something that's considered because, you know, they want to support it. And I think the, the factors of some of the things that they raised about, you know, the accessibility, the publicity, those were, were, when we think about them, small things, but to these kids make a big difference. And those are certainly factors that we want to put in place for them, too.
Couple questions. Tracy, thank you again to the staff for pulling this together in, in short order. So there's a recommendation to the Budget Committee and the Board ultimately to add about $6,200 to the budget. So I have a question. So would the goal be that the girls' ice hockey would pay the same participation fee as other groups, which is $225, if I'm not mistaken?
For the hockey team, $225. So yes, the recommendation would be that they would pay the pay-to-participate rate, and then this additional money would offset. The reason that it's recommended at $6,200 is Mr. Trefon offered a, basically, an average of participation rate over the past five or six years, and the average has been for athletes. So hence the $6,200.
It makes sense. I assumed it was because of the six. So, so let's say, as I, hopeful this will be the case. But if, if this is done, it, you know, it might have more girls interested in the sport. So what happens if next year, 10 girls show up? Where is the extra cost or funding to cover that cost gonna come from?
I think that it's always something that's gonna look at being reevaluated. So if that is a trend that we start to see, then that reevaluation process with the level of funding would need to be considered.
Understood, but the budget will be set before we'll know that. So if there's a, if there's a $6,200 line item in the budget, hopefully there will be. And then we have a good turnout and, you know, are we comfortable that the budget can absorb? But someone's gotta pay for those fees. Or is it a case where the cost gets spread out to the participants? Or they're just gonna pay the participation fee? I'm not clear on, is that all they're gonna pay if this is done, or how's that work?
Well, I think if, I mean, currently, they have four interested for next season. In the event that there were less than any additional money beyond their pay-to-participate would get brought back into the budget. In the event that there are more athletes that come into, you know, into this having an interest, then I think it needs to be a consideration that the Superintendent would, would make and, and have with the administration at the high school and, of course, with the Board. I don't, I don't have an answer for...
No, my point is, you know, hopefully, it's not dozens more. If it's dozens more, that's a great problem to have. Knowing, you know, we're going through the budget, I would have no problem supporting this. But my gut tells me that this opens the door potentially for more folks to participate, which is a great thing. We'll just be ready to plan for that if it happens. So thank you for clarifying that. I guess I have a question. So if I understand correctly, the origin, the, the, the request that came in from the various schools to, to this process, did it originally have requests for funding for girls' ice hockey, but then it was removed from the Superintendent's final budget? I think he mentioned that in his presentation.
It was on the original request that came in from the building administrators. They send in their, their requests building-wise in the middle of October, I believe.
Yeah, it's usually early in the fall. So I, I guess my question is, what changed to go from not including it to include it? Was because of the, the group showing up and we, I imagine we have this information readily available every year. And it doesn't sound like this is driving necessarily the, the decrease in female participation is driving the decision for $6,200. It sounds like it's more because it is a co-op. You know, it's a club sport, it's co-op, it's done with other groups, semi-competitive. It's a, it's like high cost. So it sounds like we wanna do the right thing and make that fairly equitable for, for everyone, not because we did the study and realized that, oh, we should add this as a sport to offset any drop in enrollment. I just, I, it sounds like because they showed up, we did some further analysis, and it sounds like to me what they're asking for is fair. And that's how we came to this conclusion.
Yes, I would agree with you. I think that after interviewing each child, talking to them about their concerns, you know, they bring to light some things that sometimes, when it's out of sight, out of mind, we don't consider. And as I did say, Mr. Trefon and Dr. Gad have been looking at this for a while and have reported, you know, over the years, that there's sustained interest. And that's another factor. When there's that sustained interest over a period of time, you know, we would want to take a look to see, how can we accommodate? How can we make this better?
I just want, one last, just a general comment. I, I've heard, you know, on the forums, people seem to be so happy, like, you know, we're being threatened. I hear the word complaint used. Just wanna clarify that the folks that showed up at our business meeting in no way, shape, or form came across as threatening a lawsuit or complaining or filing. They were extremely professional, well-versed. They laid out a professional argument. So they've been nothing but, as far as I'm concerned, cordial and in the most positive light, trying to work with the, with the school district. So I don't think it was necessary complaint. I think folks were thinking there could be a Title IX issue. It doesn't sound like there is. But I just wanna acknowledge that from what I've been hearing and seeing, they've been great to work with.
Absolutely.
So I think it's a very positive experience. I hope there's a positive outcome of this. So that being said, one last thought. Since I know there's been kind of a rule over the years that as far as co-op, clubs, as far as club sports are concerned, that we never really fund them as a Board of Ed because they need to be self-funded. I think unfortunately, the girls' ice hockey fell underneath that. I think unfortunately, the girls' ice hockey fell underneath that, and that's why, you know, ice hockey costs a lot more, obviously. So on the surface, seemed like they're being discriminated against, but that's not the case, not because they're females, just because of that club rule. The question I have is, if the Board decides to do this, add this to the budget, what about the other clubs that may have come forward or will come forward that ask for funding? You know, I don't know, like I said, there's none of that sport waiting in the wings, but does this open up discussions with potential other clubs to say, hey, you funded them, why don't you fund us?
Yeah. I think that everything is on an individual case, and it, if anything like that does happen, you, we would be required to refer back to those guiding questions about whether this is a sport or not. And I mean, some of those factors, when we look at clubs, you know, if they meet on an organized basis, that's one thing, but it really has to fall under, you know, is there a certified coach, certified by the state? Do they have a designated schedule of practice time that's commensurate with other towns and districts that have a similar sport or club? Do they have an organized competition that they train for? So when we were, when we were, you know, looking at some of that data, you know, currently, people that fall or the groups that fall under those types of categories are currently being supported through the Athletic Department.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you for fielding my questions.
Sure. Any other questions?
Yeah, this is, I don't think this is a really big deal to me, but just because this is part of the record, I don't know if this goes up online or anything, but I'm just, if you look at the percent male enrollment, just go to the bottom number down there, go to the percent female enrollment, fifty-four plus forty-six would be a hundred, so that's over a hundred percent. Which is, I don't think, as I'm eyeballing this, it's not that big of a deal, but just in terms of having that, like, out in the public forum, like, if it gets put up on the website. The, the trend appears to be exactly what you said, but I'm just pointing out that the percentages don't, yeah.
Okay, yes, thank you for pointing that out.
And then a second question that I'm wondering, that I'm just trying to understand. You, I think if you go forward two slides. Yeah, C-H-S, Athletics Funding.
Which one?
Oh, one more slide.
Oh.
Sorry, two slides.
I, yeah, I didn't, I didn't present on this, and I have the feeling that...
That one, that's what I was just talking about.
Okay, I, I think that Mr. Trefon will be taking over for me at this point. Does anybody have any further questions for me? No?
Right now, CIAC does not recognize it as a sport. Two curiosities. Are they examining it? Because clearly, we're hearing more about women's hockey, are they, which would solve an awful lot of problems if they would just say, we recognize it as a sport. Did you get any feedback from them? And secondly, what are other schools who have co-op teams doing in terms of funding? Because I assume we're not the only one.
I think that CIAC is always going to be examining the level of participation and the growing, if there's a growing interest in what they would determine. I think that the only reason it's not considered a sport at this point is because of the current percentage across the state of athletes that are participating, okay? As far as the question about, the second question?
Other schools.
Other schools? So it's varied. There are schools that will support teams one hundred percent with Athletic Department funding. There are others who will provide a percentage like we're proposing, and there are some that are fully supported and funded by parents or fundraising efforts. So it fluctuates.
What I was going to add is, so even within the co-op that Cheshire High School girls participate, Amity does fund, from their budget, the girls' hockey participation, correct, Steve? And then North Haven, do they fully fund, partially fund? Do you know?
So fund.
So North Haven self, so the, the athletes pay for their children's participation?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so this is continuing on with the Cheshire High School Athletics Funding. So the, and I'm going to ask Steve Trefon, our Athletic Director, to come and, and assist me with, with this piece of the presentation. So as we said earlier, the Cheshire Public Schools is the primary funding source for all sports and extracurricular activities. And what we're going to show you is a series of slides by season and by sport, so you could see costs, revenues that come in, as well as what the cost is per participant. So I just want to tee that up a little bit for you. So the funding that we are showing you in the next slides includes coaches' salaries, transportation, you know, any athletic-type supply, the cost of officials, as well as site rental, which we talked about, whether it's Hockey Rink, or, you know, it's Mount Suddington, or the town pool. The revenue that's generated, that's included in the upcoming slides, you know, is basically from ticket sales in some sports, and also participation fees. Last year, we shared this information, we collected about a hundred sixty-three thousand in participation fees, you know, across Dodd and Cheshire High School. So those fees do offset some of the cost of the athletics. So just the athletic budget or the athletic costs at the high school, as you see, were seven hundred nineteen thousand dollars in twenty eighteen, nineteen, and that includes fall cheer, which is six thousand sixty-nine thirty. And correct me if I'm wrong, fall cheer is club, it's not considered a sport.
Spirit group.
It's a spirit group. So that is, I think the point there is that is supported, you know, by the Board's budget. And total revenues collected were a hundred eighty-four thousand, so that's participation fees plus the cost of admission to certain events.
Sure. I don't think we've covered this really in any detail in prior years since I've been on the Board, but since the girls' ice hockey question came up in funding, a lot of Board members are getting questions on, you know, why, why can't the Board pay for this? It's only a drop in the bucket in the overall scheme of a seventy-six million dollar budget. And I think what people don't realize is the Board doesn't pay full for all sports. There's additional costs that our budget don't cover, and I think there's outside groups and folks that donate money to cover those costs. So while it's, while it's a two-hundred twenty-five dollar participation fee, it doesn't mean that all those costs are covered, and it kind of caught the Board off guard a little bit, because we really don't have any detail beyond what's in the budget, what other money's coming in necessarily that covers the cost. To get a true sense of what things cost, if that was worthwhile in the spirit of this Title IX discussion to go into details. I appreciate you coming down tonight, Steve, and helping us walk through that.
You're good? Okay. So the first season that we're going to talk about is fall. So you could see, up at the top, the football expenditure is about seventy-nine, well, it's about eighty thousand dollars, but you have revenue coming in of about twenty-six thousand nine fourteen. And I'm not going to read all of them, just the bigger ones. Girls' swim dive, thirty-seven thousand expenditure, about seventy-two hundred dollars in revenue. Girls' soccer, twenty-five thousand. So you can see the ones that are above the twenty-five thousand mark. And cross-country for boys and girls is at the lower end for fall sports, at about thirteen thousand, again, all-in, transportation, cost of any officials and related expenses. So I think the interesting thing is, when you look at it on a per-player cost, you could see that football field's the largest team with seventy-eight players. The average cost per player all-in is six hundred eighty dollars and thirty cents. Again, that's net, so Steve would, subtracting the revenue from the expenses to get that net cost number, correct? So the range there is, looks like boys' soccer at two fifty-one, eighty-five, again, a relatively large team, sixty-one participants in that sport. And then on the upper end, you know, it is football, followed by girls' volleyball and girls' swim dive. So as we go through each sport, we could pause if there's any questions, or we could keep moving on. Okay?
This is, this is fluid also, as numbers change throughout the years, some years we could have more football players, therefore, the cost per player goes down. Other years, you know, less players, et cetera, cost goes up, so, but it's about an average.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind. So the cost per player, again, it's probably a dumb question, but obviously, transportation, does that include transportation, including stipends, the insurance that we pay out, you know, out of the, that we budget in the line item?
It doesn't include the student accident insurance.
Okay.
Okay, so, but I, all the other, you know, we'll call them incremental costs that occur at the high school, it does include all those.
Trainer costs, referees...
Correct, right, right. So officials' cost, transportation, the, the stipends for coaches and their equipment cost as well. That's what gets lumped into that eventual cost per, per player.
Cost-related, like, we have to clean uniforms, we have to have helmets periodically checked, those types of things are included.
If I, if I'm mistaken, don't we have some groups that would buy uniforms or helmets or soccer jerseys from time to time? So how's that get factored into the costs? Is the, was what's in the, what's in the budget is a, a next number for sports costs, but then that wouldn't include, for example, two thousand dollars for helmets, right? Does that...
If so, if they are donated by Gridiron or Booster Club, those funds don't flow through our budget, so that would be over and above these costs that you see here. These are really the Board's related costs.
This is Board of Ed money, correct.
Will we be able to see the actual true cost, what those things passing through, so we have a good idea what it actually costs? That's, that's kind of what I was asking for.
You're, you're talking about with cost per player with parent groups putting money in as well?
Yeah, if you don't have it tonight, that's okay, but if you go back a slide where you had the total by sport. So, I mean, football's number one, let's pick on that. So is it really seventy-nine thousand dollars, or is it really eighty thou, eighty-nine thousand dollars with the stuff coming through that's donated, or, just kind of cares what the true cost is? I'm sorry, Tim. Oh. If you don't have it tonight, that's fine, it's kind of...
No, correct. So the, the monies that were shown up here are Board of Ed funding. So other items above and beyond that would be up there, coming from parent groups, isn't listed on that. And again, that's another come and go as it is. The expenses that we, we spend on our sports outfit, our teams, we make sure every kid's, for example, football, we make sure every kid has a helmet. What some of our outside organizations will do is give us money to buy brand-new helmets. So, right, that money could go up. An example would be, there's an alumni association that's a, another organization out there that is put together by a group of, of past football players. They purchased new helmets for the team, probably at a cost of about ten thousand dollars. So gives our team, puts us into best helmets that are out there. The ones we had were perfectly fine, but this just kind of gave us an added bonus. And that's not shown in that number, right?
Could we get that number, Steve?
We could, yeah. I, I, I could get those numbers. I can get numbers for you of what parent groups pay for, for our teams.
Yeah, I think we, again, I'm not sure how the groups are, you know, transparency. I, I don't think we can see the name of the group and what they contributed, but again, if I'm, if finance committee thinks I'm off the mark, I, I think we understate as a, as a district what it costs, and I think it does a little bit more of an eye-opener to see the real cost. And the fact that there are these groups that help the kids greatly, I think that should be there at some point. But, but anyway, nonetheless, got it. The answer's good, but carry on. Thanks, Steve.
Just to add a little bit of clarity, my thought on this, I am curious about in-kind contributions. When I ran cross-country, we did pasta suppers. I'm not interested in any sort of parental, parental contributions like that, but like you said, ten thousand dollars for football helmets, so I'm just curious, everything over, you know, five hundred dollars as an example of type of thing, not all the other stuff. It would take forever and be incredibly difficult or impossible to quantify, but if you know that something costs, say, over five hundred dollars, then just jot it down on a piece of paper, and this is a sort of a cost that's not borne by the taxpayers.
Right, so we're looking at more equipment items, not, like you said, banquets and things of that nature, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, so a banquet, so I'm not sure if there's like a, a banquet where you rent out the Aqua Turf, so that, that, I mean, something like that would be, I have no idea, that would be of interest. I was, literally, I was talking about Ron McCreve used to, like, find a parent, we'd go to the house, have pasta, there's, there's no definition to it. And I don't know what you would, what you would be able to quantify, because it's not your, it's not running through the public schools, through the, through the Department of Education, but what you know or can sort of get an idea about.
Some of the sports banquets are bigger than our proms, so, you know. So, yeah, so there's, there's monies out there for that as well.
So the, the additionu, the additional revenue that is not reported here, I would assume comes through the student activity accounts?
No, not, not really. They're, they're private organizations. Well, yes and no. They are at, at the school, they have accounts at the school. We don't include them into the student activity fund, if I'm not mistaken. So it's a, basically, there, such as an example would be, boys' soccer would have a boys' soccer account at the high school. That does not get included into our student activity fund on an annual basis.
So does each team have a student activity fund, or does the, each school have a student activity fund? Because like, when you're saying that the, the Alumni Association makes a, a large purchase like that, do they make the purchase on their own and donate the equipment to the school, or how would that normally work?
Correct, right, exactly right. So they will, one of two things either happen. One, they donate the money to us, and then the Athletic Department will purchase it, or two, they go out and they purchase the item, donate the actual material to us. But either way, it becomes Board of Ed property.
Okay, so in the instance where money is donated, where does the money end up?
It ends, it's basically in and out fund. It's a, we'll get an invoice for an item that they want. The example would be, let's say they wanted to purchase twenty-five helmets. We get a price of twenty-five helmets, okay, it's going to cost this much, they will give me a check for that amount, we just turn it over and pay for, for the helmets.
We being...
We, the Athletic Department.
So, so it's through Cheshire High School, or it's like, is it a, is there a, a bank account, or I'm, I'm trying to understand how the, how the money would, would flow through, exactly?
If I may, it'll flow through the student activity account for Cheshire High School. So what Steve was saying, and I know we talked about student activity, but student activity are not Board-owned funds, right? They sit in a separate account, they're not in the general fund of, of the town.
Are they in the seventy-five million dollar budget?
No, absolutely not. So student activity, and each school has a student activity account, so the money would come into the student activity sub-account for, I'm making it up, football, because I don't know if they have one, and then the money would be paid out of that student activity account. So student activity are not our funds.
So in order to, I'm just trying to get a hint on, on true costs. So there are other accounts, not part of the Board of Ed, that exist that assist with the cost of sports teams?
Well, what Steve's saying is, not all of it goes through student activity. Sometimes, an organization like Booster Club will make a purchase directly, so it doesn't come through the student activity account at the high school.
So do we have any procurement regulations dictating how a vendor could be chosen to spend the money, or does the group choose the vendor, or, or, or how does, how does that work? Is, is there a, a purchase order created somewhere, or, you know, how, how would the funds be tracked exactly? funds be tracked, exactly?
The funds are tracked through each organization's account at the high school. So we have records of all those, money in, money coming out. It's really up to the organization. So if they came to me and said that we would like to purchase something for the soccer team, here is the item, I'll either go with the vendor that they had chosen, or sometimes what I'll do is I say, hey, look, I know another vendor, I can get the exact same thing at a cheaper price, we'll go ahead with, with that vendor. But either way, the, there is accounting for it in each account at the school for those organizations.
And are the, the vendors that you would potentially recommend, do we have like an approved vendor list?
We do, right. It would have to be an approved vendor.
You can continue, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand this. It's, Vin, I thought you said a minute ago, it's, it's not our funds, or something like that?
Student ac, the student activity?
Yeah.
It's not board of ed funds. Those are separate accounts held for the benefit of students.
Sure, no, and I understand that.
Right, so like a, an example at an elementary school would be, you know, funding raised for a class trip, you know, that goes into the student activity account, and then funds that need to be used, to be paid for the benefit of the student flow through that account. Now, student activity funds are reported, you know, as a fiduciary account. If you look at the town's financials, they're, they're considered a fiduciary account. But again, I just want to make a distinction, they're not board of ed funds, they're not budgeted, it's not included in what we present as part of the budget. You're looking at me, there's a question there, Tim.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I honestly, I just, I'm just kind of dumbfounded by it, because I feel like, so I go to a worst-case scenario, something happens, and I feel like I have my, kind of am in charge of it, but not really. But if something bad happens, the finger gets pointed at the board of ed, and that's why I'm totally confused about this. And I get it, I mean, because, because there's situations where like the PTAs, okay? They pay for something, it's done entirely sort of on their own, but I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around.
But with our operating budget, so if the, if the board overspends its budget, right, it's, it's personally liable.
Yeah, yeah.
Not for student activity.
But these are not, I know, I know this is a weird legislation in Connecticut, but these are not board of accounts, I mean, I can't imagine they overspend it. In a worst-case scenario, there's a, you know, a negative balance in the account because someone's tracking what happens then, kind of thing?
Yeah.
The board's not...
I don't know, it's not a good answer.
I guess, I guess it's Vincent's problem.
It kind of is. So board, the student activity accounts, we could do another whole presentation on that. Student activity accounts, you know, are established under Connecticut general statutes, you know, so they're, they're used by all school districts for the purpose of, you know, collecting money and spending money for student-related activities, just kind of as the name sounds. They are audited annually, you know, just to make sure that the accounts are being reconciled. They're audited by RSM, our outside auditors. So there are controls in place, you know, the checks that are issued from student activity accounts, you know, the principles are here, they're all, you know, two-party checks, so there is that dual control over the assets. But again, not budgeted, not part of the board of ed's operating budget. Your question about, you know, if something happens, is the board responsible? I'm not a lawyer, I don't want to answer that question, but I could certainly find that out. I don't think so. You're responsible as a board member for the board's operating expenses.
So who's responsible for doing the consolidated reporting? Because, you know, I looked on the consolidated financial report for, it looks like 17, 18, it looks like that was the last one. There's a huge amount of money flowing through those accounts, well over a million dollars. And so who's, does, so every team has a student activity account that flows up into a main account, and then that's reported to the town?
Each school has its own student activity account.
Uh-huh.
And accounts for it, and then it's reported under fiduciary funds, you know, at the town level, based on each school's balance.
So it's like the...
So it doesn't roll up into one master account.
Does the drama club treasurer have to make a report to the town?
Drama club?
Well, by definition, it says the student activity is for student, is for student
Yes.
Does the, does the accounting for those accounts? activity. So if the drama club has an account where they had a fundraiser, and let's say, you Or no?
No, no.
know, they raised $10,000, it says that there's a treasurer that's supposed to be responsible
We just, the accounting is done at the school and reported.
And then they report to you?
Correct.
for the funds. And then you consolidate and report to the town? And so like I said, there's a, a line item in the town budget that says X, there was
We take the total of each and report that to the town.
Right, so there's...
So there's a beginning balance, an ending balance at the end of every fiscal year,
a beginning, a beginning balance, X amount of money, millions of dollars flows through,
and that's what's, you know, reported to the town and winds up in that line called fiduciary
is expended, comes in and is expended. So who reports the, those numbers to the town from the school system?
account.
So you're just like, okay, thanks for your numbers, now we'll just report that, and then, so is it the administrator of the school is ultimately responsible for all of
I'm just confused on the drama club question.
Well, no.
We report the balance of each student activity account at each school, you know,
the money that flows through the individual accounts? Who's responsible?
so we report that. At each of their schools, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if there's like a half a million dollars that flows through at a school? We being?
We, the school district reports the balance of...
So the school district is responsible for the reporting, but we are not responsible
Mm-hmm.
Then the administrator of that school is responsible for that money? for the money?
The balance. No, just timeout. Well, with whoever's doing the, the actual accounting for that, like at the high school, Student activity accounts are managed at each of the respective schools. that's the only school that would have a half a million dollars in a balance, followed
Yeah.
Right, there's a person that's responsible for accepting funds, writing checks, reconciling by Dodd, you know, followed by Highland. the account. So, again, dual control, you know, it is reconciled, it is reported, it is audited. We at central office are responsible to make sure that those accounts are being reconciled. As I said, they're audited every year as part of the audit, even though they're not I know that there's, I see concern.
Yeah.
But this is not something new. board of ed funds, and the balance of those funds are added up, and they are shown as We've been managing student activity accounts in our school district for, you know, decades. a fiduciary account balance.
Yeah, can I, could you send me a copy of the auditor's report? I asked for a specific reason, because 15 years ago, I was on the town council, and I had assumed that the audited financial statements for the board of ed, which were incorporated in the town's audit, I had assumed that the budget that was audited would have been approved by the board of ed. That's the way it's supposed to work.
That is the way it works.
It wasn't. And I spoke to our auditor about it, and he told me flat out, he said, we followed the law, we did what we were, and this has nothing to do with you. This is long before you were ever there, but I'm just pointing out, I don't have a great, you used the word audit, and you use it appropriately as far as I'm concerned, but I just don't have the confidence in it, really. Because literally what it was, when I, when I started asking questions, it never, it was never, the, the budget that was audited was never actually approved by the board of ed. It was what the superintendent gave to the town. And when I asked the auditors, they said, we did what we were supposed to do. So I just don't have confidence, and that has nothing to do with you at all, but I'm just hoping to see the auditor's report, because I don't really have confidence that it is a standard audit that is sort of how, you know, regular people would understand it.
Okay, just to be clear, so, you know, when we say it's audited, and the audit report for, for the 18, 19 fiscal year, I think is actually being reported to the town council next week or the following week. So we'll have, you know, the updated audit report relatively soon. But it's, you know, the typical function of an audit, you know, does include a test for controls, you know, test to make sure there's things like dual control, you know, they do, as part of every year's audit, pull one or two of the school's student activity accounts, and they review the transactions there, you know, so they're not looking at every line and every detail in any audit, but it's all the, it's all the controls and the statistical testing that they do. You know, they'll, you know, on a typical audit, they'll pull a list of, you know, accounts and checks that were issued, and make sure that there's appropriate documentation. So, you know, does an audit guarantee, you know, 100% accuracy? No, but, you know, it's designed to find, you know, if there is an issue, right?
Yeah, absolutely. It's just that my experience 15 years ago was, all that could be said, but it literally just sort of flew in the face of conventional wisdom.
Okay, well, when the audit report comes out, you know, I'll certainly share it with the board.
Yeah.
Okay. So good with fall? Onto winter. These are the winter sports. There's boys ice hockey, you could see 68,000 expended, 14,000 in revenue. And then boys, girls basketball, 33,000 and, and 33,000, and you could see the corresponding revenue. And the next largest one is boys swim diving with 39,000 expended and revenues of about 6,000. If you look at this on a cost per player, like we did with the fall sports, you could see the biggest, you know, teams are boys and girls indoor track with 48 and 66 students, so you could see, you know, the cost there. On the high side, it looks like boys swim diving is the highest from a cost per player perspective. Oh, wrestling. And boys ice hockey, I apologize.
Is, is boys ice hockey, that's not including their activity fee? Is that correct? Or is that including their activity?
No, that would include the revenue offset.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And again, the fee is that, it's $225, correct, Steve, for ice hockey?
Right.
But, I mean, the one thing that we know about ice hockey is that it's the rink time that, you know, is a big factor. And I don't know, I mean, transportation-wise, how far does boys ice hockey travel?
It travels to Wesleyan University, that's our home rink and our practice rink.
Okay.
To and from.
Good. Spring sports, baseball, softball, 34,000, 24,000, you could see the corresponding revenue. Lacrosse in the $25,000-plus range, with revenues offsetting that, about 8,500. And then if you look at it, cost per player, you know, it looks like boys, girls golf and baseball, softball have the highest cost per player for spring.
And the boys and girls golf is due to the rental of the...
Do they both play at Southington?
The boys play at the Farms and the girls play at Southington. But we're starting to veer more to both boys and girls at Southington.
Okay. Questions, because this rounds out the sports season.
I'm glad you brought it this detailed, this, you know, give me a better appreciation for, you know, I hope for the town, you know, that watches this or goes back to information that, you know, there's, there's a lot of cost to everything, you know, costs always go up. I didn't realize it was that high for some cases, but it gives me a perspective on things, but I appreciate you putting this together.
Okay, well, we'll try and get additional information.
Yeah, we, we get to it.
We could rework the numbers and share that with the board, you know, we'll try, I'm not sure if we could have it for Thursday night's meeting, but it sounds like we may go on past Thursday night. So as soon as we have it, we'll share it with the board members.
What I'll do is I'll take a look at the 18, 19 expenditures from our parent groups, and as mentioned, any item that may be $500 or more of equipment item, I can list down of what, what was a donation to us.
Okay, just two more pieces of information we wanted to share, and that is the parent group impact. So Steve, I'll let you explain this.
I will. We, we operate with two booster club groups, if you want to call them. One is an individual parent group, which really only serves their team, and the other one is a general Cheshire High Booster Club. So we broke these down as to what they do. Again, its benefits to the team beyond what is budgeted, just to kind of give our ki, our kids a little better athletic experience a lot of times. Some of the things that these parent groups do is they'll offer food on away trips, sandwiches and et cetera. Most of our teams are now playing night games, so it tends to be dinner for them. They do help out with uniform replacement at more regular increments, where we can purchase uniforms. Instead of giving them a lifespan of five or six years, we're turning them over at three or four years, because the parent groups are helping us purchase uniforms at a, at a faster rate. Some of our teams will pay for an additional coach. That money is funded through the board of ed. They pay for all of the expenses that would require for a coach, including the insurance and, and EFIKA. We offer, most of our teams also do a video service where they will videotape the, the games, then our athletes can go back and they can actually cut tapes of their playtime, they make highlight tapes, et cetera. Most of our teams now do it. It's an expensive service, but just about every school in Connecticut has invested in that, and our parent groups do that as well. And as we mentioned earlier, the end-of-the-year student banquets, they'll pay for that, senior gifts, things of that nature. So, the, again, in, in essence, they just help with the athletic experience, make it a little bit more special, adding some things to the teams. The second one is the Cheshire High School Booster Club. This club oversees all sports, not an individual sport. It's been around for quite a few years, they're very active, and it's, so some of the things that, that they do is they will purchase awards for teams at banquets. They do offer team grants, so a team would apply to them and say, hey, we're looking for this piece of equipment, here's the reason why, it's not in my budget or our budget, but it's something that we could use. If the Booster Club approves it, then they'll go ahead and purchase it. Any of our championship banners or any of the banner updates, that's all paid for by our Booster Club. We do concussion test all of our athletes, so every athlete gets what is called the impact concussion test. It allows us as another tool to, for our trainer to test kids if they were, did have a concussion, we can monitor their recovery. So our Booster Club pays for that software. It's about a cost of $800 a year for us to test all of our kids. They do offer scholarships, students will apply for that. They offer, I believe, about eight scholarships per year. Example would be, last year I brought in a guest speaker to talk to parents about the recruiting aspect of coming from high school to college, and that person came in and answered a lot of questions for us. Example would be Booster Club paid for that guest speaker to come in. And then they also print seasonal sport schedules that we distribute to whomever wants to. So just some examples of what our overall Booster Club does. Their funding comes from concession stands and also memberships for parents. It's $20 per family for that, it's totally voluntary for parents to pay, but that's where their funding comes from. Good, any, any questions?
Yes, you mentioned that the funding comes from the concession stands?
Right.
So I'm just curious, so I'm assuming this is something that's gone on for decades, they've staffed the concession stands? Is that, are they the only ones who do it? Does anybody else do it?
The Booster Club is the only one that does the concession stand at most of our major events. It allows us as another tool to, for our trainer to test kids if they did have a concussion, we can monitor their recovery. So, our Booster Club pays for that software. It's about a cost of $800 a year for us to test all of our kids. They do offer scholarships, students will apply for that. They offer, I believe, about eight scholarships per year. Example would be last year, I brought in a guest speaker to talk to parents about the recruiting aspect of coming from high school to college, and that person came in and answered a lot of questions for us. Example would be Booster Club paid for that guest speaker to come in. And then, they also print seasonal sport schedules that we distribute to whomever wants to. So, just some examples of what our overall Booster Club does. Their funding comes from concession stands and also memberships for parents. It's $20 per family for that, it's totally voluntary for parents to pay, but that's where their funding comes from.
Good. Any questions?
Yes. You mentioned that the funding comes from the concession stands?
Right.
So, I'm just curious, so I'm assuming this is something that's gone on for decades, they've staffed the concession stands? Is that, are they the only ones who do it? Does anybody else do it?
The Booster Club is the only one that does the concession stand at most of our major events. Some of the smaller events, Tim, some of the individual teams will run their own concession stand.
Okay.
And then, that is income for them.
Okay.
Run by their parent group.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Anything else, folks?
That's it for the athletic portion of tonight's discussion.
Again, I thank you for your support with athletics. We have a great athletic program, and I know you guys support us well, so thank you.
Thank you, Steve, that's it. You know, your staff's putting this together. We just felt, you know, with the girls' ice hockey and, you know, having this detail, hopefully sheds a little more light to the community that, you know, there's more involved to just what's in the board budget to support this stuff, so I appreciate the time you put into this. Thank you.
Okay. How about a little building use?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair of the finance, I'm wondering if we, can we switch up instructional expense before we get into the building use overview? I apologize if I'm screwing up here.
Just curious.
Well, first of all, the building use thing isn't even on the agenda, and we're supposed to be going through the instructional expense and special education presentation and not, not that I'm making any judgments, but I think that's a little bit more important than going into the building use overview, if that's possible, because I also have to leave at some point, and I'd like to...
Well, it was, Mr. Mastian explained to me that the building use is part of the operations and maintenance portion of the presentation, so we just felt that we could, we'd do it earlier in the evening. So, that's sort of our, the thought process there. But, in the interests of, of time, or not even time, that's the wrong word, but how long do you think that the instructional expense presentation would go? Just...
Just instructional or the rest of tonight?
No, just instructional.
And special education.
15 minutes? Well, special education, I...
Yeah, um, that's... Yeah, special education, we were going to, at the end of this meeting, we were going to table that and push that for till Thursday.
Oh.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't care, okay, I thought...
Yeah, so, no, we're not going to try and fit everything in tonight, we're gonna, because because of the additional information, we're gonna, we're gonna extend out, so, all right. So, why don't we, we'll continue on how we're going, since you're ready.
Okay. So, building use, I will cover this as quickly as I can, you know, so if there are questions, we could stop. But, building use, I know that it's been a topic that's just been discussed, you know, lately in, you know, amongst the board members and also quite extensively last year. So, I know we have some new board members, so I just want to kind of cover the basic. The first is building use policy and fees around building use, which consist of building use fees and custodial fees, are governed by Board of Ed Policy Number 1330, very detailed, there's a policy and there's a regulation, so I'm not going to cover, you know, the entire policy this evening, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that there is a board policy that covers it. And that policy starts with that the school buildings and grounds are public property, and the board may make them available for purposes other than education when they're not in use for school purposes. So, what I thought I would do is just, you know, point out the obvious. You know, the first priority as it relates to building use is use by our buildings for our schools. You know, one of the things that we really are very, you know, cognizant and careful about is we have to get 180 student days in each year, and they have to be completed by June 30th. And what affects our ability to meet June 30th are when we close a building. So, we try never to close buildings, but to the extent we have to, the typical reason that we close our buildings is the board, you know, and the community members know, is when there's weather, generally snow. So, you know, we don't have a choice, we're, we do try and do delayed openings or early dismissals if we can, but there are days that we have to close. The other reason that we close buildings, which is less frequent, is when we have an emergency, such as a power loss in a building, lack of heat, I put here blackwater backups, which happens from time to time. So, you know, there are those emergencies that prevent us from opening a building or requiring early dismissal. The most important thing, you know, as it relates to building use, you know, regardless of whether it's for students or non-students, is safety, security, and the needs of the building occupants. Those are the critical things that we have to manage. And also, the protection of the buildings, they're our school and town assets, so we work very hard to make sure that, you know, we're preserving the actual asset. When we're in school, I just want the board members to kind of think about what you already know, we have a lot of resources on hand when we have occupants in the building. You know, we have our administrators, we have our nurses, we have our building maintainers, we have other maintenance staff, we have our school resource officers, hall monitors, and the list goes on and on. Obviously, our teachers are there, you know, our instructional assistants, I think those are given, but outside of those classroom resources, there's a lot of staff in the building when the buildings are occupied. The second priority for our building, and it's not that it's not important, but it is the second priority, is any after-hour use, whether if it's for, you know, students, you know, boy scouts, girl scouts, PTA, evening and weekend use. Our buildings are used constantly, especially as you look at the larger buildings, being the high school, you know, Dod, you know, Highland, but all our buildings are used quite a lot. Generally, we're going to have lower occupancy rates during the after-hours use, we're going to have less resources on hand, but that doesn't mean the safety and protection of the occupants and the protection of the assets aren't critical. So, with that said, the, there's a policy around building use as to who pays building use fees. So, this slide just talks about building use fees. If you are a Group 2 user, there is a fee, and I'm going to show you that schedule in just a second. If you're a Group 1 user, which includes boy scouts, girl scouts, PTA, PTOs, park and rec, you don't pay a building use fee. Building use fee is intended to cover our overhead, electricity, heat, cooling, maintenance, bathroom supply, supplies related to cleaning. Okay? So, there's a policy around that, it's very, very detailed. The fees, if you're a Group 1, you see up at the top, if you're a Group 1 user, there is no building use fee. Board of Ed, as an example, does not pay a building use fee when we have our Board of Ed meetings. But if you're in Group 2, 3, or 4, you could see, this is just a schedule for the high school, again, this is all available online in the Board of Ed Policy section. If you're using a gym at the high school and you're a Group 2, it's $120, if you're a Group 3, it's $300, and if you're Group 4, it's actually the 300 plus the 78, I believe is how that, that works. So, just understand, there is a schedule for building use. We reported at the last, either the last board meeting or at Mr. Solon's presentation, that our building use fees collected were about $13,000 last year. The bulk of that, $9,000, paid by the YMCA because they have the before and aftercare. You know, I would say, as a general statement, there's a lot of legacy users that fall and aren't charged a building use fee, they're treated as if they're Group 1, but they're not necessarily Group 1. A lot of those come through the park and rec program, even though they're not bona fide park and rec programs. So, we haven't been, my point is, we haven't been aggressive on collecting building use fees. I think it's a matter of, of the way things work and just, just being good community citizens, we allow building use. The second piece to, to fees is this, it's the custodial fees and it's the cafeteria fees. So, if there's a custodian, and we call our custodians building maintainers now, the rate that you pay is $50 an hour if it's evenings or Saturdays, because our staff gets paid time and a half, and the $50 covers basically their payroll cost. It's their salary plus FICA, plus the variable portion of the pension contributions. We're not charging for medical benefits or anything like that. That staff, if they're in the building, is paid $65 an hour on Sundays and holidays because they're on double time. And to the extent that any building user is using cafeteria staff, it's the same thing, it's the hourly rate plus related payroll cost. Both groups have a minimum of, of three hours, and then there's an additional fee over and above that. So, I already talked about the overhead, what, what I want to spend a minute on is the custodial fees. So, the custodial fees are intended to reimburse us for the payroll cost when we have to assign a building maintainer. We had over 9,300 events, if you look at our event calendar, about 200 of those events were events where we had to have a building maintainer and the custodial fee was charged. So, the vast majority of the times, there is no custodial fee with building use. But the reasons that we need a building maintainer are whenever we have a, an event that has spectators, right, so if it's just a practice and the coach and students, generally there's not a building maintainer, but if we have spectators, if food is being served or is being consumed, we'll need a building maintainer, if school equipment is being used, or if we have lifting or moving of items, have to have a building maintainer because we don't want anyone to get hurt. In that middle section there, you see that groups are not charged a custodial fee if we have a custodian in the building already. So, that's typically Monday to Friday, you know, till about 3:30 in the elementary schools. Dod, we have someone here till 6:00, and at Cheshire High School, Monday through Friday, we have a building maintainer in the building till 10 o'clock. So, if there's already a, a building maintainer, and it's not an event that, you know, we specifically need a maintainer because there's food being served, that is no charge to the user group. I already talked about the fees at the bottom here. So, one of the things that we do allow, as an example here at Dod Middle School, is if there's a basketball practice, park and rec, Cheshire Travel Basketball, those are two separate groups, the park and rec department assigns what they call a building supervisor. And, and basically, they'll allow people into the building, into the gym, and we're perfectly okay with that. But, the level of service that we provide and we need a building maintainer for is a lot different, and that's what I want to just take you through. It's not just opening and closing a building, and it's just, just not just cleaning up the building, you know. Our building maintainers are very familiar with the buildings, with the building systems, whether it's a security system, you know, whether it's a lighting system, electrical system, they have access to all areas of the building. They could troubleshoot issues in real time, which do occur, you know, they can identify corrective actions that need to be taken, you know, they have uniforms, they're readily identifiable, and they're duly trained for an occupied building, which is very, very important. You know, they participate in all the drills we have when there's, you know, staff and students in the building, so that's one of the, the traits that they have. You know, this is a little bit hard to read, and the board members do have this, but the type of training that our building maintainers have to go through, most of this is, is repeated annually, but I'm not going to go through all of them, but they are trained in first aid, they are mandated reporters under DCF, so if they observe an issue and a concern about a, a student, they are mandated reporters and are trained in how to do that. Obviously, some of the things that you would expect, back injury and lifting, eye and face protection, those are things that they're trained for. The one on here that I think is important and is often maybe overlooked or, or not recognized, is that, you know, kind of in the middle, bloodborne pathogen exposure prevention. So, in the ordinary world of a parent, you know, if a child spits up, or if there's, you know, a poop miss or something like that, you deal with it very differently than in a school. In a school, those are all bloodborne pathogens that have to be treated with, you know, the proper equipment and the proper materials and chemicals, okay? So, it's a big deal, and our staff is trained in that. And so, what could possibly go wrong in our buildings? A lot. Now, didn't list them all, but these are just some of the more recent ones. At Highland, you know, we had a power outage and we blew up 24 heating coils, we had to close just Highland School, actually, we just hit the one-year anniversary of that, it was Martin Luther King Day last year. You know, because of the skills of our staff and our vendors, we only lost one school day, which we had to make up at the end of, of the year, but that's one thing that could go wrong. You know, we had over at Norton, a tree fell on one of our portables, we had a gas leak over at Chapman School, actually, this, this past school year, at Cheshire High School in September of 2016, we had to have emergency early dismissal because, you know, there was a backup from our toilets into the main hallway. And at Highland School, we had carbon monoxide event that was, you know, rather serious back in 2016. So, there's a lot to our buildings and, and a lot of things that can happen when it's occupied. So, that's why we're really, really diligent and careful. We don't, you know, on, certainly on the after-hour side, we, you know, look to assign a building maintainer when we need it, when we think it's the safe and the prudent thing to do. We don't overuse it, I think we, we do it reasonably and responsibly. And then, the last thing I want to leave you with is, you know, building use planning takes a lot of resources here at the schools, and, you know, there is a, it's online application called FS Direct, that's how individuals request building use. I could present on a, a day on that system, but just understand, we had about 9,300 building events that we had to manage. We don't have any one person assigned to do building use, it's assigned to a bunch of different people. Whenever a building use request comes in, for Dod Middle School, for example, it's electronically routed through the secretary, the administrator, central office, you know, if it needs to get appealed, it would go to our, you know, facility manager or for me, we have to do the billing, we have to do the collection. So, there's a lot of work and effort that goes into building use. You could see that we estimate it as about 1,435 hours per year. So, you know, I think for the most part, it's fair to say that those, the building use that we have runs pretty smoothly and effectively, and I think we do provide, you know, good value to the, to the users after the school day. That's building use.
Thank you for that. You'd mentioned, I could, you'd mentioned, I think you said you hadn't been aggressive in collecting the building use fee. I'm curious, what is, so what sort of system do you use for the building use fee? And specifically, what I'm wondering about, so I do this myself in my own job.
Yeah.
Again, I'm involved in this. And, I mean, if you use Excel, an event could get deleted and then, you know, by accident, and then you have no idea it happened, and the fee never gets collected. Is there any sort of audit trail over building?
FS Direct is a, is a piece of software that's designed specifically for schools for building use.
Okay.
So, we were on paper system until three years ago, and since we've been on FS Direct, you know, we're doing a lot better job of not only tracking events, but also billing and collecting. So, when I say, you know, we haven't been aggressive at collecting fees, it's, it's not that, it's that we, as a school in general, haven't been very aggressive at charging people fees. I mean, if we stuck to the schedule, we would have additional building use revenue. That's certainly something that we can do, I'm not advocating for that, but, you know, there's a lot of legacy users that, you know, we aren't charged building use. Custodial reimbursement, different. If we have a custodian, you know, we are charging and billing for that.
Okay. So, this is catching me off guard. I saw... I saw the list before of the Class One, and it's PTAs, PTOs, Boy Scouts, and they don't get charged. But then there's other groups. So, honestly, I mean, the thing is, is that does somebody end up having the ability to steer things in a certain direction because it's their brother or something? I mean, it's a...
No, no, it's not, it's not that. It's that we have people that fall into Group Two that aren't charged building use because they are typically getting treated as if they were a park and rec organization, even though they're not.
And these are basically legacy issues that, I mean, should the Board of Ed...
They're local groups, they're local community groups.
No, no, but it's like the Booster Club is the one who has been collecting, you know, doing the concession stands. I get it, it's been out there. I mean, is this something that the Board of Ed should be reviewing to see how it should be enforced? It seems to me like it's...
I think the intent is for the Board to get a little bit deeper into the weeds, not necessarily tonight, but that is, there is a lot more to this that we can talk about.
Okay, thank you.
So, listen, you mentioned earlier, I thought it was a pretty staggering number. So, nine-thousand three-hundred events, was that for the last school year, last calendar year?
That was, that was seventeen eighteen, actually. Last year is, I don't have final numbers pulled, but last year is about, you know, the same amount. And that ranges for everything, YMCA, you know, before and after care. They're in the building in the morning, they're in the building in the evening. So, for each school, that's, you know, three-hundred sixty events times the six schools, I think, where they operate. So, Board of Ed meetings, but then again, there's all the sports groups, all the gym use. I know we've been hearing a lot about gym use, but those ninety-three hundred events include all that.
No, again, so, so thank you for sharing that. I think you might have mentioned a number actually probably a year ago. This time, we were talking separately about possibly using other funds to offset the costs of these groups, which I'm not a fan of doing. But the point is, the question, other question I had is, so, you mentioned in the last budget presentation, the revenue that's budgeted for this year is approximately ten thousand dollars. That goes directly to the Town General Fund, that doesn't have to be Board of Ed. So, is there, I mean, we have a policy around this, but, you know, is there any repercussion if the Board of Ed doesn't charge for facility usage?
If we don't charge?
It doesn't seem like it's our decision, since it's a town revenue source, and ultimately, I think they're using that money to, you know, obviously put it back into building. So, the point is, we, you know, as we report in the papers and so forth, that, you know, the Board can opt to not do certain things, that's not necessarily true. And we will have a much deeper discussion on this at some point, because it is my intent to work with the Town Council to get these facts out there, right? Because I think, you know, we hear stories and feedback and things and experiences that some are accurate, some are not very accurate, and there's a lot more detail that happens that the Town Council's not privy to. And I think, you know, it's worthwhile sharing this information for the new board members, refresh some of ours, but I won't get into it tonight, but, you know, again, I think you putting this together is very helpful. I'm going to make sure our Town Council colleagues have this information at their disposal to help, you know, on their side of things. But I guess my question is, I don't have an answer or solution to solving some of these scheduling problems or fee problems. I mean, what you laid out was pretty straightforward, but for the Board, at some point, we'll, you know, we'll get into this a little deeper to see where it goes. But thank you for putting this together.
Okay.
From a liability point of view, you mentioned that our maintainers are certified in the bloodborne pathogen, and I'm assuming the liquid spills on the floors throughout our buildings. And so, does our liability insurance allow for someone other than a non-certified person to sort of provide coverage to the buildings, I guess specifically on the weekends, because it seemed like you were stressing that maintainers usually there during the week, Monday to Friday. But on the weekends, it's a specific expense because a maintainer normally wouldn't be there, so there's that additional charge. So, if someone were to be there that wasn't necessarily certified in those additional things, does that create an additional expense as far as increasing our exposure to liability? If someone were in the building and were to get hurt or to be injured or anything like that?
There's a couple of points that I would make. I'm not sure that it would increase our liability and/or our liability insurance cost. You know, I think we would have to use reasonable care, which we do, you know, as to whether or not to assign someone in our buildings. I mean, I don't think there's any insurance requirement that you have to have, you know, a building maintainer. In fact, I know that's not the case. But you just have to have reasonable control over the building. Building users also, outside building users are required to provide a million-dollar certificate of insurance when they do use our buildings. So, Y, Cheshire travel basketball, all the outside groups, that's just one of the requirements that they have. So, really, typical outside organization, their insurance would cover it, not ours. But again, I think that's a different issue than do we need someone in the building that's a building maintainer? Or are we good, based on the organization and the intended use, to have someone, you know, occupy a building without having a building maintainer?
So, is it a preference, or is it mandatory that, let's say, there was an injury on the premises, where normally, you know, common sense would dictate, well, I'm just going to call 911 to have, you know, paramedics arrive to help with the injury? But the potential mess left over, if a maintainer weren't there who was certified to clean these things up properly, what would happen in a case like that?
I mean, typically, it's reported and the building maintainer, you know, whoever does the cleanup, the building maintainer will double back, and if it's a disinfection issue, will do that at the time. I mean, we do have, you know, a good example, you know, if we have a park and rec, you know, building supervisor in our building, they do communicate with our staff. We have an on-call building maintainer too. There's someone on call for the schools at all times. And, you know, it's done on a rotating basis, they cover one week at a time. So, we would get a call typically if there were an event after, you know, if there were an incident that required 911, that would obviously happen by whoever's in the building. But, you know, we do get communication as to what's happened in the building, and we would take, you know, treat it that way.
So, then, in a, let's call it a best-case scenario, if we were to not, to no longer require maintainers to be in the building on the weekend except for, let's say, an open close or a sweep or a sweeper of the area instead of being there the entire time, is that something that would be acceptable to us or not?
Depends on the situation, but, I mean, for the most part, we already do what we need to be doing. You know, there's a building maintainer when we need them there, so...
Right, but at a char, an additional charge currently? Because normally, there's not a maintainer there during the weekend unless there was an event, correct? Where we would be charging them to be there?
Yeah, they'll come in for an event, they're not staffed on the weekend.
Right, right, that's what I'm getting at, yeah, yeah. Normally, the building would be closed or, but I would guess most weekends, there is something going on anyway, right?
Every weekend, I would say, with a few exceptions.
Okay.
So, and again, what I'm saying to you, Adam, is that I feel that we're providing a building maintainer when we have to have one, you know? And moving away from that, you know, would really be a difficult thing for me to, you know, accept unless there's good reason to do that.
Are any of these outside groups in arrears in what they owe us in terms of either custodial fees or building use fees?
We're up to date on last year. For this year, you know, we've certainly billed, we haven't collected everything that's been billed. So, but that's part of the process. So, the remedy is, if someone doesn't pay their bill, and that's part of the policy, that we don't have to allow them additional building access.
So, no one owes us anything for the last, when you say the last...
Last fiscal year.
Okay. So, you're, we're clear?
Yes. But this year, the building users don't, some are faster payers than others, as you would see, I guess, in any, any kind of business. But we do, you know, invoice and we follow up if we're not getting paid.
Can you estimate how much you're owed?
Right now? I'll provide it at the next board meeting. It would be a wild guess. But our building use, just to, I guess, put some context around it, you know, our custodial fee billing last year, forty-five thousand dollars, and building use was about thirteen thousand. So, that's our maximum exposure. Good on building use? All right. You want to do instructional expense? All right, so the sections of the budget we have left are instructional expense, support services, maintenance, and operations. I'll keep going until somebody tells me to stop, okay? So, instructional expense, it's about 6.4% of our overall budget, you see on the bottom left there. The amount that's being requested is four million eight fifty-five one sixty-nine. It's about a 6.15% increase. The major categories that fall under instructional expense, special education tuition, you could see that's 2.2 million or about 46%. These are for students that we cannot service and needs in district, and we send them out of district and we pay tuition. That's what that particular category is. And then the second largest category is special education pupil services, basically the consulting and other, you know, services that we provide in-house for our special education students. So, those two, you know, account for about 63% of total instructional expense. The rest of special education in, which is certified salaries, you know, including speech and language therapists, those are part of certified salaries. So, these are just two specific sections of special education costs. We will be talking more in more detail about special education. I believe that's being pushed to next Thursday's meeting, there is a presentation by Ms. Hussey. The other categories of instructional expense include instructional supply, those are generally items that are supplied for our students. Textbooks, software, curriculum is about 11% of this total portion of the budget. New and replacement equipment, that includes furniture, any type of, you know, office equipment that we have inside our school buildings, there is a small increase requested for those two categories. Staff training, library, periodicals, media, testing, and adult supplies. So, if we look at this based on what's in the budget book, you could see line item by line item. I will say that staff training, a lot of that, 214,300 requested is actually curriculum writing that is done during the summer months. So, you know, the training is, most of the professional development that we do is done in-house by our own staff, so we're not outsourcing and spending significant dollars in staff training outside. Pupil services and tuition outplacement, you could see those increases of 3.6 and 4.7%, which we talked about. Instructional supply, looking to increase staff by 43,697. What I do want to point out is, when we have budget reductions, typically, these are some of the accounts that we will stop spending money on. So, you could see down at the bottom, in this 2019 budget year that we're in, the 560, which is tuition outplacement, that account was reduced 50,000 because students' needs were lower when we completed the budget process than when we started. But the other accounts, the 611, which is instructional supply, you could see that we reduced that $60,000 for this budget year. So, going up to 43,000 is less than it was cut for this fiscal year. And then those other accounts, textbooks, library curriculum materials, library media supplies, testing supplies, and replacement equipment, if you look at the amount that those were reduced, those were reduced about $120,000 for this year's budget. So, you know, again, these are the categories that we typically have not been funding fully the last few years. As we've explained in the past, we always prioritize what are the things that we need with the funding that we have, and we'll continue to do that. But the bulk of the increase, you could see falls in the tuition outplacement, instructional supply, textbooks, quite a bit of that is restorative. Any questions? I'm just going to touch on this, but if you look at the far right column, 2021, what this reflects, that 19 million 17468, that's what's dedicated, if you look across the entire budget, to special education needs for the 2021 year. And so, if you take it as a percentage of the $76 million budget request, about 25% of the budget is dedicated for special education needs. And then if you look at that bottom section of rows, we're anticipating that we'll have about 542 students with individualized education plans for next year, even with this year is what we're saying, but that's likely to increase. In fact, I think it may have increased already for this year since we started preparing the budget. The total percentage of students that have an individualized education plan, you could see is about 13% projected for next year. It's 12.9% this year, and it has been increasing if you look back to the 11.2% in 2014, 15. So, you know, even though we've said it before, as our student enrollment drops, our special education population is not decreasing, hence the need for the additional funding. And then you could see the bottom is the expenditure per IEP student. So, there'll be a lot more detail around this when Ms. Hussey presents on Thursday night. That's just a preview of her cover. So, within instructional expenses, just a couple of, couple of quick points. The curriculum council focus for 2020, 21 is business social studies, academically gifted is AGP, and school counseling. Some of the, you know, funding in that curriculum writing will be for the next-generation science standards, college career, and civic life, and then support for K-12 math, specifically Eureka for K through five, Algebra I and geometry. So, this is what, you know, has been prioritized, you know, by our curriculum department led by Ms. Solano. Anything to add, you're good. As far as instructional materials and resources that we're anticipating purchasing, we have some updates or replacements of textbooks for math, again, in line with what you saw previously, Eureka, Algebra II, and Geometry text, college prep level, as well as college career and civic life for social studies. And then professional development for next year, these are some of the focus areas. You know, continuing to focus on complex thinking, social emotional learning, including coaching, and professional development for teachers and staff, the next-generation science standards, and the K-5 math program. So, again, pretty tightly wrapped around those core items. If we look at instructional expense as a percent of budget, historically, you could see that we've been kind of flat, you know, bouncing up and down, you know, as a percentage of budget, you know, lower than we were back in, you know, 2000, 2001, a little over 7% of the budget. You know, the last few years, we've been hovering around 6.5%. You know, the last few years, we've been hovering around 6.5% of the total budget is dedicated for instructional expenses. And with more going to those special education lines, you know, basically what it tells you is that the non-special ed lines, you know, have, you know, dropped in terms of funding provided. Support services is next. So support services is about 8.9% of the budget. We're looking for a 2.51% increase this year. You know, far and away, the biggest portion of support service is that first line, $3.9 million is our student transportation, regular and special ed and student activities, and that includes fuel and insurance. You know, the next largest category is other professional services, so that includes expenses related to paying for Apex, our network consultants on the technology side, fees that we paid for outside counsel, the audit that we do every year through RSM, that's, you know, about $35,000. You know, some expenses related to Board of Education meeting all fallen, other professional services. The energy performance contract, I'll talk about that very quickly. I guess it's six years ago, we entered into a contract with Amaresco. We did infrastructure upgrades to all our buildings, everything from the computer-controlled LED lighting, replacing the electric heat at Highland School, the electric heat at the back of Cheshire High School. Those energy improvements are paying for themselves over a 15-year cycle. There is a loan or lease associated with that, and that's paid out of, you know, you know, this support services budget, and it's roughly $600,000 per year. But the offset to that is savings in electricity, you know, natural gas, oil, and other energy-related accounts. So we're saving the money on one side, but we're responsible for the schools' portion of that payment for the energy performance contract, and we're roughly 80% of the contract, the town pays the other 20%. And I'm going to skip over this so that we could jump right into this. So you'll see that other professional services, you know, we're requesting a $10,400 increase. In this line is where we're budgeting for the development of the board strategic plan. So we did add some additional funding for that. You could see pupil transportation is going up about 2.86%. The next slide is on pupil transportation. That's, you know, generally in line with the contract we have. All the other line items are really kind of flat. Capital equipment, that 19,309, that's actually where we budget for the energy performance contract, and that increase is the contractual amount that we owe for that energy performance contract. And you could see that those accounts, 531, so communications, travel, other services, office supply, transportation supply, other supply, and dues and fees, we took a combined cut of 63,000 to those categories. So not quite as much as instructional services or instructional expenses were reduced in this year's budget, but certainly some. So with transportation, very quickly, if you look at the cost by category, 1.9 million of the total for transportation is our general ed public school routes, about 1.1 million is special education, you know, specialized transportation for those students. Fuel, equipment, and repairs is 365,000. That 205,681, that's for student activity, whether it's sports, music, field trips, those types of events are about 5%. Private school routes, that 202,000, we provide under Connecticut state law, transportation for St. Bridget's private school students. Students that attend Boag, Wilcox, and other schools in lieu of the high school or in addition to, that's about 141,000. And then we do have separate transportation insurance that we pay for out of this budget. Question?
Just about how many kids take the public school routes?
Hold on one second. We transport 3,500 total students per day, of which St. Bridget's is 104. So it's about 3,400 students, and that's regular ed transportation.
Okay, so taking out the special ed, you have, what, 4,100 students total? I'm just curious, it's about 600 walkers and 3,500 bussers, basically.
Right.
What does it say? So is the 3,500, does that include, like, high school kids who drive who are, I'm just curious?
It includes Cheshire High School, as well as the vocation, vocational and technical schools.
Okay. And a number of those kids drive, probably.
So this is eligible riders?
Yeah, yeah. No, I understand.
They're not walkers, that doesn't mean they all take the bus.
Yeah, yeah.
The bus has to be made available for them.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
Welcome. Just a couple of things I want to mention regarding transportation. We are in the first year of our new contract with DATCO this year. There was no increase in that contract as part of the agreement we have with DATCO, but next year, we have a 2% increase by contract. And if you look historically, our last contract, we went up 3% a year, and the contract before, 4% a year. So DATCO really did work with us to get this new contract into place. And in addition to that, they've also equipped the entire fleet with GPS so that the buses can be tracked. You can see speeds on buses, we could see, you know, did a bus, in fact, stop at a certain location. All the DATCO buses are also equipped with internal video surveillance cameras, and then as part of this agreement, DATCO is funding the new depot facility. There's a triple Y trailer replacing the double Y in the spring. And we do everything we can to try and keep, you know, the cost of transportation as low as possible. We do consolidate routes. A couple of years ago, rather than offering summer school at multiple locations, we only offer summer school at Highland. You know, we've made some improvements to the route, so that saved us money. You know, we do participate in essentially a co-op with Aces for special education students that need to go to the outplace centers. So there are many things that we do to try and keep the transportation costs down as low as we possibly can. On the technology side, which is also part of the budget here for support services, just a few things. One, we completed this past summer the upgrade of our Wi-Fi, so we are, you know, pretty much state-of-the-art. We've expanded, you know, the number of access points because we have so many Chromebooks that have been deployed now. We wanted to make sure that our coverage was adequate. The most important thing on this slide, I do want to point out, is, you know, we try and take advantage of any kind of opportunity to reduce our costs. So these Wi-Fi upgrades, which we did over the last two summers, are eligible for E-rate funding. About 40% of the project cost is paid by federal government, and so the $81,000 gross cost, we got about $32,000 in E-rate funding. So our project cost was $49,000. So we are in great shape, you know, with our network and with our Wi-Fi network. We launched Safe Schools online training. Some of the training that I showed you that the building maintainers are taking advantage of is doing online through this platform, which is excellent. We are doing our best, and we're in compliance with the student data privacy law, and we, in fact, upgraded the software to this learn platform. And if you go on the Cheshire Schools website, if you're interested in the software we use, and whether or not it's got a privacy agreement and you want to see it, you can go right to our school website to see that. We finished, we almost finished with the video surveillance upgrades, so we're in the final phase of installing cameras. All the wiring was done over the summer, and the cameras are still being installed, should be done very soon. All our PCs that are used in the district typically by our administrative, secretarial staff, as well as our teachers, because the PC drives the smartboard in our classrooms, those have all been upgraded this summer to Windows 10. So we needed to make sure we were ahead of the expiration of support for Windows 7. This DNS hosting, we outsourced that to the Connecticut Education Network that supplies our internet service, and we were actually struggling with it internally. So rather than, you know, replace the servers that were driving it, you know, it was Mike Pop, our technology manager, you know, who's very active with the Connecticut Education Network, he serves on one of their boards, found that we could have this hosted. And it was done in a very short period of time, and it's not costing us anything. So it was actually a terrific move, and we're not struggling with the things we were struggling with prior to that. We talked about in our last budget presentation, our smartboards are 10 years plus, and they are at the end of their usable life, and the technology that's out there is something that we are exploring, and we're piloting some interactive flat panels right now, actually the VuSonics. And then the last thing that I want to mention is that we moved all our local laser jet printers to a cost-per-print program, like our large multi-function printers. And this is in an attempt to continue to reduce our printing costs and try and stop printing, and I have some of the principals here that can attest to, this is not an easy thing to do, to, you know, take local printers off, you know, a teacher's desk or force them to use a large, you know, machine that's not in their classroom to produce documents, but it has saved us money. So it's been a good initiative, but not so simple to actually implement.
With regard to the federal funding that you got, were there any strings attached?
To the managed print?
The top, no, the top line, the wireless upgrade?
The strings are that you have to have very precise records of the equipment that's installed, but there's no penalty attachment, if that's a question.
There's no strings. Honestly, I was just thinking about data. What happens with the data, that was it. I didn't know if the federal government was saying, we'll give you this money, and then you have to report all the, you know, student user information back to us.
No, 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 no.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the board's aware that we do everything we can to try and, you know, save money where we can so that we can spend it on the things that are important, that are educational. So I'm not going to belabor this point. What was that?
Energy.
Well, I had to hit this one, because I know this one's important. But we talked about the energy performance contract. The other thing that we do to try and, you know, keep our costs down, or certainly, you know, have a reasonable expectation of what our costs would be, is wherever we can, we do try and lock prices. So you could see that we're locked on unleaded gas right now through the end of next December, $65,000, it's a pretty good price. And more and more of our vehicles are using gas. We have 50,000 gallons of diesel fuel locked for our buses at $2.03. We do pay for the fuel for the buses, even though it's a contract with DATCO. The reason we do that is because we don't pay tax as a school district, and if DATCO purchased the fuel, they would pay tax, which means we pay the tax, so that's why we do that. But we're locked at a pretty good price through the end of the school year. Heating oil locked at $2.02 a gallon. Our electricity is locked at, this is just the electricity supply, at 7.38 cents per kilowatt hour, and that contract runs through 2022. And natural gas is the only commodity that we're not locked in because the pricing is just not that good. And we've done reasonably well. Yankee Gas is the natural gas provider in this area, so not having a contract has actually worked out a little bit better for us.
What sort, do you happen to know what sort of mileage you get for the school buses? Miles per gallon?
On the diesel buses, below 10, but I can get you some better estimates than that.
Yeah, thank you.
They're large diesel engines, so the mileage is not that great. Yes?
What's DATCO's average value per year?
Of the 9 million, it's like 3.1 or so.
So the balances and the fuel insurance?
And the contract with DATCO is a per bus per day. So the, you know, type 1, the large bus, you know, when we run a bus, it's, I want to say that this year's rate is about 3.31, but I'm not 100% sure of that. A type 2, a smaller bus, is in the $270, you know, per day range. So, I mean, if you do that math, times 180 days, you know, to the extent we can eliminate, you know, a bus route, it's about $55,000 in savings. And we have been able to do that over the years through some of the things that we've done, like route consolidation. The fact that student enrollment is down helps, so we're always looking to see what can we do. Any more questions on this one? The other things that, you know, we do is, you know, we take advantage of, we bid when we have to, but there are, you know, state bids, consortium, purchasing groups, you know, we negotiate with our vendors all across our platform wherever we can. You know, we do apply, and we've been approved in all four rounds of school security grants here in Cheshire. We have a couple of school construction grants that we're trying to get approved by the state right now. We use Amazon for, you know, all the purchases where it's the lowest-cost provider, we don't pay shipping fees. And then we use technology wherever we can to, you know, improve our efficiency. If you look at support services as a percentage of budget, that big spike that you could, you see occurred around 2011-12, a lot of that has to do with the energy performance contract that was instituted. So it drove this, this particular group of accounts up, but it leveled off on the operations and maintenance budget, which we didn't cover yet. That's support services.
I believe it's going to be interesting. Time that will end here this evening, and we'll table maintenance and operations as well as the special education presentation until Thursday.
Are you sure? I can keep going.
No, I think, I think we're okay. So, oh, yes, go ahead.
I would actually request that we continue through maintenance and operations in lieu of having yet another meeting to adopt the budget next week, but that's just how I feel about it.
Okay. Duly noted.
We're here. Let's just do it.
We could do that, but being that we are late into the evening already, and that we could have additional discussion on that on Thursday, at least I'll ask for this. I would like to have a motion to table the operations and maintenance portion of the agenda, as well as the special education presentation.
I move that we table special education presentation and review of operations and maintenance until the Thursday budget meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, babe.
All in favor?
Is it the whole thing or just?
Just us.
Just the point?
Yeah. All right. So, all right, so we're tabling those agenda items until Thursday, January 23rd. Mr. Chairman, I hand the gavel back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Grippel. Just a reminder, there will be a, next meeting here is the DA, January 23rd, this Thursday. This is the follow-up meeting to remain there at operating budget review and possible discussion from the board. from the Board Finance Committee on a budget number. If needed, on January 28th, next week, there'll be a special meeting in the Board Education to adopt a board education budget. We'll be, stay tuned for that, we'll see how Thursday goes. That being said, I will ask for questions from the audience, but everyone's bundled up and ready to go. Jamie, do you, okay, not to put you on the spot.
I'm checking the table.
Okay, and for those folks that cannot be here, that may be watching these videos, I feel for you. It was at least a couple hours long, but thank you. If you do have questions, comments, concerns, ideas about the budget, please feel free to email any board member those questions, and if you wish to be anonymous, we'll do it, we'll honor that. We're all here to help answer, and we'll try to get those answers through the next meeting. That being said, do I have a motion to adjourn? Adam, is there a second?
Second.
Andrew seconds, all in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.